Hello.
Hello.
There.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Can't complain.
That's good. Always a good thing.
Deacon, I think you're muted. I can see you trying to talk.
How are we now?
There you go, better.
Okay, great.
Is anyone able to hear me?
I can hear you.
I was, my audio was cut off before, thank you.
Well. My sense is we have a quorum now, we could start. Are you good, Carrie?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, great. Well, I'll open the meeting. Does, is there someone interested in making public comment either about something that's not on the agenda or or that person has to leave early?
I had two things, Deacon, I wanted to maybe mention, I don't know if it's unanticipated business, or we can just sort of stick it in for public comment. Say what?
Keep talking.
Okay. They're both related to bylaws. One is, you know, 2023 bylaws and then an update on the associate member process. So I don't know where you want to stick those two, or if you want to stick them somewhere.
Well, why don't you, why don't you just do it now? I mean, that's
I'm guessing there's no real public who wants to say anything?
Well, I'm not hearing, I mean, no one else has, has, has said anything.
I, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I do have a few things. I believe it's on the agenda today about the open design permit for lot H151.
Yes, yes. One thing I should say is that we're not tonight going to be talking about the details of that of that application. I, I screwed up the noticing, we're not able to have a legal meeting about, a legal hearing about the about that application tonight. What we're going to do is to set another date and renotice that for the hearing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that.
I mean, I don't know if that, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just have a ton of questions about that. Will another notice be sent out?
Well, we're going to talk tonight about, we're going to talk tonight about another date and then we'll, and then we'll get, and then we'll do noticing for that day.
Okay, perfect. So we'll just kind of probably head out and then, you know, just wait for that notice.
So you're
So, so Deacon, are we talking about notice of a hearing that will be given orally tonight by extension, or are we talking about another set of mailed notices?
Another set of mailed notices.
All right, so this gentleman will receive that then.
Well, if he's in a butter.
Okay, so there are some concerns about this. So the property owner was my grandfather. Unfortunately, he passed last week, so there's kind of, there's a lot of paperwork that has to go through for transfer of ownership and all that stuff. So I'm not sure if, if that complicates sending a notice out or anything.
Wait a minute, the property owner.
Yeah.
Is, are, is this the project property or?
No, so we live at 97 Leverett Road. It was Gordon Fretwell who was the owner and we, we live there. My mom is likely going to become the owner of said house. I'm just speaking in her stead.
Living there is good enough.
Perfect.
But, but the, the legal notice will, will go to whoever's, whoever the assessors have on record now.
Okay, all right, that's fine. My grandmother still lives there, so she'll get it.
So Mac, what's your name?
Mac Tyrell.
All right, pardon me?
Uh, Mac Tyrell.
Tyrell, thank you. Yeah, my name is Doc Prime. I'm a reporter for the journal, for the reminder.
Yeah.
So this is not a subject tonight. This is not going to be discussed.
Yep.
That's right, we're, we're going to set a new date and, and have the real discussion on that date.
Okay, yeah, that's totally fine. I was just asking some questions. Carry on.
Thank you.
Okay, so I should leave you gentlemen to your work?
No, you don't have to leave.
If, if the you know, public hearing for that special permit was the only reason you'd find a Schuylsbury Planning Board so interesting to show up for one of our meetings, and yeah, that's not happening, so yeah.
Oh, it hurts, it hurts, it hurts.
Oh, let me tell you, I'm, I'm running around like a chicken with my head off, you know, to, to cover stories, so it's not really a matter of being interesting. And I used to be a housing contractor, so all this stuff is very interesting to me. Yeah. But I thank you, I thank you.
It'll have to be interesting on another night.
It will be, it will be. This is a key piece of property in town, isn't it? Kinda. It's so close to town center.
Well, the front of it's in town center, the back of it's in the next district back, but for all intents and purposes, it's in the town center.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I'll be looking forward to that discussion and thank you.
Thank you. So any other public comment before, before we go back to Michael?
Yeah, I have public comment. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Steve, we can hear you.
No, okay, good. Thank you. I like it that way. Now, the reason is I've never had it down to Zoom on my phone before. I left my laptop at work, so just checking, thank you.
Okay, so, so Michael, why don't you continue?
Sure. So the first thing is just an update. On, if you all remember, way back when in 2020, we passed this associate member bylaw, which only got partially approved by the AG because they said that it only pertains to special permits. So what, you know, this is just sort of a recap, but you know, Jeff consulted with Donna and Bob Ritchie, who both basically said that they thought we were still interpreting it correctly, but there's no appeal process and they recommended taking the legislative pathway. And then we went to the select board and shared that with them and asked permission to sort of go to the legislators to file on behalf of the town and make it be a statewide legislative effort. So the new legislative session starts in January, which is when new bills would get filed for the new session. So per the select board's guidance, I emailed both Joe Commerford's office and then Aaron Saunders, who's going to be our new rep. And then last week, Jeff and I had a meeting with two people from Joe's office, her chief of staff, Jared, and her legislative aide, Brian Rossman. I think we had a good conversation. My takeaway, and Jeff can definitely jump in, was that conceptually, they got the issue that, you know, we, in Schuylsbury, but generally, we think planning boards, associate members should have broad range of roles similar to what CBAs have, as opposed to just being restricted to special permits. So they got that. They had not been familiar with it prior. And then we had a conversation more about practicality and tactics. So they were saying, given the way the legislature works and the ability of a good idea to get through to the finish line and actually becoming law is harder than doing a home rule. And so they were going to go back to Joe and just talk amongst themselves. We made it clear that we preferred to make it a statewide initiative, only because we think there's other planning boards who would benefit. And from my research, there's probably about 15 who have existing bylaws that are inconsistent with the Attorney General's interpretation, which is fascinating. So, but we also said, you know, we can only get a home rule and that'll get us as a town board, we would do that. And then the only thing I'll just share, and then leave it to Jeff, is I talked to the legislative person at MMA today who deals with zoning issues, and as I said I was going to do, because Joe's office was interested in reaching out to MMA and we had talked about it. She reported she'd never heard of this before, but she also realized that that was, is actually a legitimate issue and was probably, she's going to talk to their chief legislative person and check around and maybe talk to other municipalities that I had discovered had bylaws that are inconsistent with the AG's interpretation. So she's going to get back to me as well. So Jeff, did I say that all correctly? And do you have stuff to add?
Sure. Let's see, on, on my side, I've reached out to the American Planning Association Massachusetts chapter and the Massachusetts Association of Planning Directors, both of, you know, the, the two leading planning organizations in the state of which I'm a member. I've also reached out to Ben Fiero, who's the lobbyist for the home builders of Mass, Home Builders Association Massachusetts. We've been playing a little phone tag, but I'll get with him before too long and verify what I believe will be a positive reaction to this. Let's see, tomorrow I'm going to see Bob Ritchie, so I'm going to ask him if his organization, Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, MMLA, would be interested in supporting this as well. So, yeah, it, it takes a little time because these things have to sort of wind their way from the point person up through whatever kind of committee considers this stuff. And they have to consider it and vote on it. So it, it takes a little bit of time.
Yeah. So we shall see. So I think we'll just report, I mean, it feels like something will get filed. There's a good likelihood that something will be filed in January, what, what it looks like, whether it's statewide or a home rule. But we can report on that either January or February meeting when we know more.
Robert, Michael or Jeff, could you just briefly summarize the issue?
Sure. Well, Jeff, you want to do it?
Sure. The state statute, the zoning act provides differently for zoning board of appeal associate members than it does for planning board associate members. Zoning board of appeal associate members have the authority to act on anything that's before the zoning board. Be a full member, account for a quorum, to do anything that they do. Whereas, planning board associate members are only mentioned in the special permit section of the zoning act. And the AG has interpreted that they may only serve as part of a quorum on a special permit application. They can't do anything else. They can't do a site plan, or a P and R, or a subdivision. Any, any other things that we do, including having discussions like this, they, they can't count towards this one. So that really, that really limits the utility of planning board associate members. And what we want to do with this discussion is that's the two of them equal. So planning board associates have the same powers as zoning board associates.
Thank you.
We can get the most use out of them.
And so, Robert, the idea, the one, the thing about which pathway it takes, a home rule versus a statewide is a home rule, they could submit legislation that would just allow Schuylsbury to have this ability, which would be good for us just because then we can do it if it passes. And the statewide route is harder, but there's a lot more, you know, stakeholders that would benefit if it was achieved. The one thing that both Joe Commerford's office and MMA said, which was interesting, is that they said sometimes it takes a couple of legislative sessions for home rules to get filed. So like Schuylsbury will get one this time and some other town will get another time and they're built sort of momentum to someone finally say, hey, why are all these towns doing home rules? There must be a bigger problem. So, you know, worst comes to worst, if we were successful, we could be the first one. So it remains, it's a political as opposed to a substantive question in terms of how it advances, assuming they support it.
For, for example, and it's silly, the town of Medford has the ability to do impact fees because they have an impact fee piece of special legislation, which gives them that power. But that's, none of the other communities in Mass, other than Cape Cod, have that ability. So whole rule petitions are, are, are fine, but I mean, it doesn't solve the problem, really. It, it just gives one particular town a special privilege and ignores the others. So Michael and I being civic minded, advance the, the practice of planning and Massachusetts municipal planning would prefer that it be statewide, I would think, yeah.
Well, thank you both, Jeff and Michael, for doing what you do and, and for this explanation.
You're welcome. Deacon, can I roll into the other bylaw things briefly? Oh, you're muted, but I saw you say sure. So I emailed Deacon a couple of weeks ago to ask to get this on the agenda, but I guess it got missed. So I'll just mention it, maybe we can talk about it next month. But you know, in years past, somewhere in late fall, we've talked about what bylaws are queued up for the coming town meeting, you know, for annual town meeting in May or June. So I thought we could sort of have a conversation about that because it usually takes a couple of meetings to discuss. The two that I wanted to put out there just for a reminder, one is last town meeting, there was a whole discussion about lighting. And there, you know, although it got retracted, there was a discussion of the planning board coming up with a comprehensive lighting bylaw for the reason that the person who would come to us and asked about it and submitted something. You know, it was sort of rushed. It was maybe a month turnaround. It really didn't have enough time to sort of put the thought behind it and then have a planning board discussion. So that's something we could queue up. And then the other one sort of wearing my Energy and Climate Action Committee hat. I raised this last year, but it didn't go anywhere, but there was the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan that the town had done a few years ago around climate. And then there's the Hazard Mitigation Plan that got done, I think, in the last two years. And both of those have a really long list of recommendations that the town can do either to afford hazards or to deal with climate changes that would affect the town. And there's a handful of recommendations that impact the planning board. My sense is that of that handful, some of her are highly unlikely, you know. So for example, one that I think is important, but we're not going to get to because, you know, we've got maybe solar stuff coming down the pike still, is updating the town's master plan. But, you know, the master plan was last updated in 2008. It was a big lift, you know, and some of you guys took the leadership in that. So, and you know, there's a lot of pain and effort to do that one. So I don't necessarily think that's realistic. But there are other ones that have sort of got mentioned in these reports. One was incentivizing individual homeowners about, around self-sufficiency. So, you know, there's a little bit of stuff that we've done regulatorily about, say, residential batteries, you know, we could sort of have a conversation, see if there's anything around climate that's related. And then the big thing that keeps emerging in a variety of ways in these reports is stormwater management, whether it's impervious cover, just regulations in terms of driveways, things like that. And then just generally speaking, land use regulations. So it seemed like it'd be worthwhile if we could carve out some time next meeting to talk about in the context of climate resiliency and sort of hazard mitigation. Are there bylaw efforts that we want to take a stab at or at least identify so that going forward, if we don't have the time this year, we can sort of keep them on our radar? So that would, that's sort of my request for a January agenda item. Deacon, you're still muted.
Sorry. You're probably better off. Well, let's go on to, let's go on to the minutes for, for eight, eight and nine, 12. It was in the process of reviewing these with with Carrie last week that I, I realized that I'd screwed up the, the noticing, but, but I did review these two sets of minutes and I was all right with them, so.
Did we get them sent out?
Yes.
Okay, I totally missed them. I apologize. Okay, I totally missed them, I apologize.
Deacon, you sent them out, uh, a few days ago, yes?
Carrie sent them out, yes.
Oh, Carrie sent them out, okay.
So I, I wrote them before this meeting and. I'm okay with them. I. Do have a comment about meetings, jet, meeting minutes in general, but maybe that's another, another. Not these in particular, in these.
Wait, say, Jeff, would you, would you repeat yourself? I, I didn't hear that, I missed that.
I, I've heard those meetings and meeting minutes and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with them, there's nothing that jumps out at me is. Misrepresenting what was said.
But did I hear you have a bigger issue at hand?
I just. Think that when the Planning Board is sort of free associating and, um. Discussing something or other that's not a motion. You know, where no motion has been made, where no action is going to result from our discussions. That. Those discussions should be, um, quite briefly noted. With, without the detail. And only when we have a motion before us, when somebody makes a motion, somebody second, seconds it and there's discussion. Do we need to really get into detail of what, um, you know, what the points and counterpoints are? Um, of it, so. I, I just think we should focus on action items in our minutes and not just all the. All the things that some of us may say.
And, and would we still be complying with, you know, open meeting law by doing that? I, I understand what you're saying. You're saying if there's no motion, that just, what you would say is that the, the topic of such and such was discussed and that was it. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, it, it could elaborate a little bit, it could, you know, say various, uh. Points were, were brought up, some that were pro this and some that were, 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 were not that and, you know, whatever, but. You know, all, all these discussions that we have, just, uh, pre-form freelance discussions, I, I don't think we need to. Um, to, to, um, you know, have verbatim statements of, of what we all say. Um, and wha- what we should focus on is, is when we're operating under a motion. And that's action, and action will, action will result, a vote will result, then we need to get it down.
Yeah, so, Steve, my, my two cents to answer your question. Is the open meeting law guidance is. A reasonable person reading the minute should understand what happened at the meeting. Um, so I think Jeff's on target, you know, so. A very sparse and not compliant open meeting law interpretation would be if you just record the votes. Because, you know, some people say, oh, you just have to record the votes, that's only, the only thing required, but it's no longer that way with the clarification of this reasonable. Person understanding, you sort of have to have the context behind that. Um, but I would agree that, you know, verbatim stuff that's sort of. Not even deliberation, um, because deliberation is about moving towards a decision. Um, we don't need to have extensive discussion, I think that's, you're, we're fine in terms of open meeting law, and I think Jeff's on target that. The place where you wanna get specific is if there's a motion or if there's something substantive, even if there's not a motion. Um, something that's really substantive that is hovering around decisions.
So, Michael.
I just wanna kind of. Agree with both Jeff and Michael, but just that. That point about, you know, sometimes there's something that has some substance that maybe not is voted on, but definitely we can. Shorten it up and, you know, I mean, I, I struggled with it when I was doing the minutes when we were talking about. All the late bylaw stuff, you know, but it's, uh. You know, and I think the reason Jeff was gonna hold off is because obviously, uh, Carrie is gonna be leading us and at some point we're gonna get a new clerk and that's. Who we're gonna need to talk to about this, but, uh.
I think that, that also, um. Um, the chair can ask the clerk, the, the recording clerk. Um, under certain circumstances to take careful notes about something, you know, it's a chair's discretion. Um, please take careful notes on this. Um, and then the, the clerk can, can comply, and, and I think if. If, um, one of us feels very strongly that, um. That, that's something that they're saying, um, needs to be in the minutes. Um, this is often associated with a controversy, then. We can request that, that, that that be in the minute, please put this in the minute, I feel strongly that, blah, blah. Um.
Okay, so, so let me, let me bring this around full circle then. This discussion we're having about note taking doesn't warrant detail, it just warrants a statement like. Um, meeting, uh, the discussion, there was a discussion about how detailed. Um, to take meeting notes that, that weren't involved with any kind of motion. Is that along the lines of something we, you know, Carrie might. How Carrie might kind of synopsize this discussion?
Yeah, that could be, you, you know, Jeff introduced the topic of, um, of the, the, the level of detail in meeting minutes. And suggested that only, um. Only, uh, the, 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 the detail is, is more appropriate when there's a motion on, on the floor. And otherwise, um, discussion ensued among the members, um. Blah, 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 but it doesn't have to be every last little thing that.
Okay.
We all said.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Because I haven't made a motion, we're not doing anything, you know, we're just shooting the crap here.
Yeah, I think it'll make it easier, Carrie, on your end, that if you can sort of sit back and let us talk and then figure out what the hell we said.
I agree completely, and thank you, Jeff, for that feedback, because honestly, the only, like, person who's given me feedback in any of my minutes. Is Miriam, because I do a lot of minutes for COMCOM, and she likes them very thorough, as, I don't know if anyone's. Looked at any of my Conservation Commission meetings, but they are like fifteen pages long. Well, they're also like three hour meetings, so, um, but I, thank you, Jeff, I think that's great feedback and I'll definitely. Shorten it, make it a little bit more summarized.
Yeah, so, so, uh, Michael, if you aren't troublemaker, you could say, I make a motion that we discuss. How detailed the minute should be.
I, I get, I get labeled a troublemaker too often, I'm gonna step out of that one.
Well, I, I do, I seriously, I do appreciate the clarification. Yeah, but I, 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 I think we're all in agreement at this point.
I see Ashley has a, a hand up or something, yeah. There looks to be a little, a little hand up by Ashley.
I don't see it, I don't see it.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Carrie had her hand up for a while, but then.
Maybe she forgot it, okay. All right, well, that's just input for, um.
Well, let's get back to, yeah, let's get back to actually, uh, talking about the minutes of eight, eight.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, and discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Um, Steve?
He's muted, oh, Steve, unmuted.
I'll come, I'll come back to Steve. Jeff Weston.
Aye.
Uh, Robert.
Aye.
Uh. Jeff Lacy.
Aye.
Michael DeCara.
Since I uncharacteristically didn't read them, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, okay, uh, I'm an I, and, um, I'll try Stephen, Steve again.
Aye.
Okay, did I miss anybody?
Right here.
Nathan.
Nathan, I'm sorry.
I'm an I.
There it is, and it's good.
So, I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes of September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll, um, Jeff Lacy.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Robert.
Aye.
Michael.
Stain.
Okay, um, Nathan.
Aye.
I'm an I. Did I miss anybody?
Jeff Weston.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Weston.
Aye.
Okay, great. Great. So, let's.
So, when we gotta do this hearing?
Um, well, from reading the emails, um. Um, the first Monday in January, um, is a holiday. The second Monday in January, um, Mark Whitman can't come. Um, so I was wondering about Wednesday, the fourth or Wednesday, the eleventh.
Um, wait a minute, um, January, um, the, the first Monday is, uh.
The second, it's a holiday.
The holiday.
Oh, that's, um, that's the holiday of third.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but still, that. That, um, that puts us at the ninth, doesn't it?
Well, no, I'm saying that Mark Whitman can't come the ninth.
Can't come the ninth, okay.
So I was wondering about the fourth or the eleventh.
When do we, when's the, the deadline for having to have the hearing?
Well, we're already past.
Oh, so, it's, it's just to continue.
I mean. Donna sent out a, sent out a. A request to Mark Whitman that he, um. That he agreed to this, um, to this rescheduling, and he's done that, um.
So that was, that was the extension that we needed, okay.
Yeah, that's, well, it's not actually an extension, but.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Functionally.
So, so are, are people good with either the fourth or the eleventh? I was trying to, I was trying to get it done reasonably early in the month.
Well, I have a question for you, so.
Are we still have our meeting on the, on the, we're regular meeting on the ninth, are we gonna?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, because if we're gonna, if we do it on the eleventh, we can just have a regular meeting and a hearing on the eleventh. Um. If we.
Or the fourth, or the fourth.
I mean.
I, I, my gut is always like those first few days after, in the new year, a little chaotic, I'd sort of prefer to do it the next week if that's possible, but.
So you like the eleventh?
Yeah, personally, yeah, I do.
I would prefer the eleventh, I have a ZBA meeting and hearing on the fifth.
Doesn't matter to me, I'm fine either way.
I'm with Robert either way.
Same. That's, uh, Nathan Murphy here.
So, so do I hear anybody objecting to the eleventh?
I have, I have a question, is that enough time for the public notice, is the eleventh?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I mean, the, the, the public notice requirement gets us very early into the month where we. And then, um. The ability of people to be there or a holiday keep us a little later.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Deacon, if we shoot for the eleventh, would you? Be leaning towards just combining that into the meeting and we would not meet on the ninth?
I would, that would be my take.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Well, well, I, um. I'm gonna assume that this is a consensus view at this point and not call the roll, is that a problem for anybody?
So. Aye.
Fine with me.
Okay, great, great, thank you. Um. Well, I put down solar update just to, just because we always talk about it, um, I don't know if there's anything actually new to say.
I don't have anything else, the la- at the last meeting I reported on a field visit, which was supposed. One day after a hurricane that came through here, um, but that was last meeting, I haven't been out there since.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well. Um, without the hearing, I, I don't have a lot more to, I, I don't, I'm not thinking we have a lot more to do. I'm, I'm certainly open to suggestions. Well, I guess you're asking, can anybody think of anything we wanna talk about?
I am.
I can't think of anything, but I'll bet you Michael can, Michael.
No, I was gonna move to adjourn.
He got in early.
Carrie has her hand up, Deacon, Carrie has her hand up.
Carrie.
I just had one small question for the notice, are you gonna give me a whole new notice, or should I just make the appropriate edits?
Are, you're gonna be in the, at the town hall tomorrow morning?
Yes.
I'll come see you.
Okay, sounds good.
I think I'll try to do better.
Is there a motion on the floor that needs a second?
Yeah.
Carrie. I may come see you too.
Okay.
Uh, regarding the ZBA.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'll. Any discussion on a, on a journey?
I only have one.
I wanna make a, a note, you know, since we were touching on open meeting law earlier, that, uh. There's a provision for reasonably unanticipated business, but other than that, uh. We gotta keep our topics to what's on the agenda. That's all.
My one discussion point is, Nathan, I think you have to adjust your cuckoo clock, or whatever that is.
Why is that?
Because you were doing it before, I was just teasing you.
Fair enough.
Well, I, I think we have a lot of latitude when it comes to, uh, administrative and scheduling and. Kind of stuff like that, I mean, we can't, we, we can't ad hoc. Take up somebody's project that we're thinking about, or somebody's land, or talk about. Something without people here, without any notice, we can't do that, but, you know, if we're just. We're just, uh, freelancing about how we do things and. Um, what our schedule looks like, I think we can do that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I think the unanticipated stuff, Nathan, in terms of like. With the upcoming bylaws and agenda item, I think that's, you know, that's fine, sort of, it's like. Can we talk about this in the future, because then it goes on the agenda, um, you know, the. Associate member update, one could call it either way, it's sort of, it's, it's more an update, um. But, you know, better if it's, better if it's in the agenda, I agree.
If we say, hey, let's hammer out some, you know, some thoughts on, uh, the master plan or like a tiny house provision or something like that. That would be no go.
Like getting into the substance, yeah, I agree, yeah, yeah, totally.
Good clarification.
So.
So are, are we ready for me to call the roll on adjourning?
Let's move to adjourn.
All right, we're already there.
Oh, we are, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll call the roll, Jeff Weston.
Aye.
Jeff Lacy.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Rob, Robert.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Um, I'm an I.
And I'm an I.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah, same here.
Bye.